...in here and certainly will affect the university as a whole. I just want to let you guys know, we are here as universities to support you, your faculty, your staff, your friends here at the university. And hopefully tonight, we are going to be able to answer some questions for you or give you as much information as we currently have about MAP dollars. Explain to you a little bit about what MAP is, why you qualify for it, what's happening with the state right now, and what you guys can do personally to help because we have been your advocates and now we need you guys advocating for yourself. So, thank you guys for coming. This is extremely important to us. Feel free to ask any question. If you're not wanting to ask a question in front of others, that's fine. Reach out to any one of us that is speaking tonight and we will be able to guide you in the right direction on that. This is information that you guys need to know. And please, for any other students that are out there, you guys be our voice for us because they need to understand what is happening and how this can personally affect them. So, thank you guys for coming and without further ado, President Gervais.
Thank you, Heidi. First of all, let me just ask, how many students here are participants in the MAP program? So, the Monetary Award Program, MAP, really has been around for over 50 years and it has helped millions of Illinois students attend college. And we wanted to continue. Everybody you talked to says they wanted to continue, but yet, the money isn't there right now. So, this is about, this evening is about two really important facts that each of us, particularly the students who are affected, have to really focus on and be determined to do something about. The first fact is, the state of Illinois owes you money. That is the truth. The state of Illinois owes you money. They made a commitment, the state has made a commitment, to support you to this extent with the MAP program. And so far, nothing has been released. The second important fact is, it is critical to find ways to enable each student in this room and each student at the university. It is critical to find ways to enable each student to continue and complete your Quincy University education. All studies show that college graduates earn significantly more over a lifetime than non-graduates, as much as a million dollars or more. And life itself is more interesting. So, we have to find a way to get beyond this hurdle of the MAP grant problem. The challenge is that like almost every institution in the state, Quincy University doesn't have deep pockets as an institution. So, we can't simply write it off, we can carry that amount for a while, but we have to figure out a solution. We have to figure out a solution to both those critical facts. The state owes you money and we want to find a way for you to be able to stay in school. So, to deal with each of those two facts, our leadership team has researched this a lot and we've talked about it a lot. And first, I'm going to ask Dr. Tiffany Nolan, Vice President for Student Engagement and Success, to talk with you about a plan that you would like to propose to really send a message loud and clear to the state that the state owes you money. And then the second piece of this, the second critical fact that it's really important to find ways for you to stay in school, that's going to be addressed by our Vice President for Business and Finance, Tim Wies. Their comments will be relatively brief because as a town hall meeting, we want this to be more a conversation than a presentation. And so, your questions are going to be really important. If you're shy, I would encourage you to put the shyness aside, but if you're still shy, talk to us after conclusion, we'll hang around. So, with that, I turn it over to Dr. Nolan.
Good evening. Thank you all for attending this evening. I have two points that I'm going to make, and this is about how you can engage in the process and how you can use your vote to make the state release the funds. Okay, there are going to be two things that we're going to do. We're doing a letter writing campaign, which we have organized. And so, as you leave tonight, you'll see at the back of the room, there are several stations with different letters. So, find the letter of your last name and we're going to have a letter to your representative, all ready for you to go. Hello? I can leave. We're good. So, we're going to ask you to sign letters to your representatives. We will take care of everything else. The letter is written, ready to go. We know who your representatives are and we will put them in the mail tomorrow. For those of you who are not MAP grant recipients but are here in support of our MAP recipients, we have a petition in the back for you to sign. Starting tomorrow, there will also be information on our website where you can send letters as well to pressure our legislators to release these funds. Additionally, next Tuesday, November 10th, there will be a rally in the Rotunda of the Capitol. QU will be sending a bus of students up there, so if you would... If you would like to attend, there are signups. Is that better? All right. There are signups as you leave the room to your left. You can sign up. The bus will leave at 8:00 AM on Tuesday and will come back to campus and arrive at around 4:00 o'clock. While we were there, there will be a rally in the Rotunda of college students from across the state. We will then have an opportunity to meet with state legislators and then we will have lunch and head back. Lunch is on us for that day. It is very important, if you can go, for you to be there. Your presence matters because you're going to come face to face with people who are making this decision. And it's much harder to say no to a college student who is face to face telling you their story. So, if you can attend, please sign up at the back of the room, right outside the doors to your left. If you have any questions at all, starting tomorrow, the remaining letters will be in our office, Student Engagement, Francis 135, and you can also sign up for the bus trip then. At this time, I am going to turn it over to Tim Wies, our Vice President for Business and Finance, to talk to you a little bit more about the funding.
In order to prepare for the potential of the state not paying your MAP funds, what we're doing in the Business Office and Financial Aid Office is asking you to set up an individual meeting with us to talk about the MAP grant. It's very important for you to make these meetings because each of you is different in all of your funding. So, our required funding that you'll need to finish out this school year is different for each of one of you. At the end of our question and answer session, we'll have sheets in the back that you can actually sign up for those meetings and those will start this Wednesday. What those meetings will entail is we'll try to come up with different plans for you or different options for you to finish out this year. Some of those might be either extending, having an extended payment plan or looking at loan options that you may have, whether it be through federal government or other financial aid. So, with that, just want to say we encourage you to sign up for these meetings. Tell your friends to sign up for these meetings just so you see how it's going to affect you going forward.
All right, guys. I know there's got to be tons of questions. A couple of things that I'll just say really quickly before we open it up because I think there's maybe a little bit of confusion still as to what MAP is. And I know you guys have your little cheat sheet, but I've been asked questions such as, does this affect my endowed scholarship? Does this affect my Pell? Does this affect... All of those questions. How do I know what the state said that I was getting for MAP? First and foremost, our students, all students in the state of Illinois are eligible for MAP. It's not just Quincy University that's not receiving their MAP dollars right now, it's all schools in the state of Illinois. You guys personally have received up to $2,360, that's correct, right? Per semester. So, how you can find out what you were promised from the state is on that sheet as well. And that is by going to our Moodle, your Moodle account rather, and going to the Student Portal and then going through the Business Office tab. You can actually see what your financial aid package looks like and you can see what the state had promised you guys at the beginning of the year. We call it financial aid packaging. So, a lot of the times you'll see many different things in there. You'll see your Pell, your grant, any aid that we gave you personally will be in there as well. So, some of the questions that have also been asked is, are we getting it from Fall? What's happening with Fall? Because we have two different kinds of scenarios here right now. We've got Fall and we have Spring. So, Fall right now, we have 288 students that are waiting for this money and it's almost $700,000 that the university is floating right now. This is your money that you guys were supposed to be using to pay for college, that the university had been told we were receiving from you guys coming to the university. So, basically, what's happening is we are covering that cost for you guys. At this point, we are hoping that Fall does come through. We really have not a good idea, but we are really hoping that it still goes through and so that that money hopefully will be covered by the state. What is a little bit, well more than a little bit right now, unknown is Spring 2016. Many universities are not packaging that at all. And so, what I mean by that is when somebody is going to apply at the university or register for classes and they look at their financial aid package, they're not even putting MAP on there at all. You'll see in your package that we did. There's a couple of reasons for that. We don't know if it's going to come through, but if it does come through, we want you guys to receive those dollars. If we don't package that in there, you guys will not have the ability to receive those dollars if they do come through. So, we'll be talking more and more and more about that. That's one of the meetings that you guys will be having with the Financial Aid and Business Office. And what we have done is we've made a commitment to be able to try to find every dollar possible that we can give you to, or the state can give you, to help cover these costs for you guys. We, Financial Aid, have been diligently looking into all kinds of creative ways. At this point, that's what we have to do is get creative. And so, what we don't want to happen is there's no panic. We want you guys to have a voice. We want you guys to know that you are in this with hundreds of thousands of fellow, other Illinois students right now. All right? And so, it's important for us to have our face shown at the Capitol on the tent. And, you know, it's going to be a great experience for you guys to be there as well and tell your story. You'll see this website behind us. I know a lot of parents, we've had a ton of parents' calls. This gives us kind of, you guys rather, a brief synopsis of what's happening. This site is updated weekly with what is happening with the state. And so, this is probably the easiest website to read. I've really looked at many, many websites talking about MAP grant and it can become rather confusing. This one kind of lays it out really well for you guys. And it's on the bottom of that cheat sheet that I gave you. Let's start with questions. Anybody here at the panel can answer any of them. So, who has a question? I know there's got to be questions out there. Well, let me kind of start with one of the questions. Where? Oh, yes. Okay, why is the state not giving us the money?
Good question. But, the state of Illinois is in terrible financial shape. There has been, there is a significant debt. The state owes that, how many billions it is. And the state has not been able to create a balanced budget. Year after year, the legislature has passed deficit budgets. Deficit means that you spend more than you take in. And if you do that, then you wind up going deeper and deeper into debt. In the last election for the governor, the new governor is a Republican, the legislature is controlled by the Democrats, and there is partisan conflict. The governor, who has expressed concern about the lack of funding for MAP, has expressed empathy for college students, nevertheless, is not willing to do anything unless the legislature presents a balanced budget to stop the deficits that increase debt. On the other hand, the legislature is saying they are constrained in the kind of budget they can present because of past commitments that the state has made to all sorts of people, especially pension obligations that consume a big part of the state's budget. So, there is a sort of ideological impact to that attitude forward. Some of the legislators have proposed that MAP be considered second for the time being, even though the state doesn't have an official budget. This is the first time, certainly in my memory, that there is no approved budget for the state of Illinois. It's been over four months. And that's the most, that's the essential constitutional duty of the government, is to have a budget and to implement budgets. So, in some respects, if you don't have a budget, you don't really have an effective government because you don't know what you can and can't spend. So, there has been some talk about having a separate conversation and a separate debate just about MAP funding, even though the rest of the budget remains unresolved. This is why the member tent is so important, because our understanding is that there will be a special conversation, discussion in your legislature about MAP specifically. Don't know if that's exactly true, if that's the information you've got. We belong to an organization called the Federation of Independent Illinois Colleges and Universities, 60 schools throughout the state. And the head of that is very much in touch with what's happening politically in Springfield. And that's the word that we got. But you should know that all 60 of these schools are having the same problems that we are. I don't know if Missouri loves company, but there's a lot of company. Yes?
That conversation about specifically about, is that about this Fall or is that Spring going forward?
It's actually, this Fall and Spring, our hope is, we don't know for sure, but our hope is that if this can be resolved, there'll be a clear way forward for the future. But it could be dire, it could be the other direction. It's just, there's just no way of knowing. It's the uncertainty that's over Springfield because you can't plan and you have no definite information.
And has there been any suspicion of possibly just cutting or limiting or cutting back on it, not completely cutting it fully?
That, oh, that is always dangerous and that's another reason why coming out and showing of force is so important. And that's another reason why I started by saying at the beginning, it's really important to stay in school because all studies show that college graduates on average earn a million dollars or more over one's lifetime. And that can be presented to legislators as evidence that MAP is a good investment for the state because it creates higher, it creates citizens who will produce more, earn more, and pay more taxes. Someone else have a hand up? Or just crazy. Something else? Yes?
So, if the state doesn't hold you up with the money that we're owed, how long before can you have the pay to you for what we're owed for you to this fall?
This is why Tim mentioned that it's really important to have a conversation, set in time, to speak specifically with someone in the Business Office because we are trying to tailor a program to meet the needs of each individual student. Everybody's circumstances are different. We talked about different kinds of blanket solutions or blanket policies, but nothing seemed to really cover all the bases. And it just makes more sense to just have that individual conversation. We're going to try and do the debt, let me just assure you, we're going to try and do the very best we can. Is there anything you want to add to that? Or is that... Mark? Oh, ease of mind if you're a senior, we're not going to hold up transcripts over this, if that's a concern. Right? Is that a concern? Yeah. But if that was going to be, yeah, we're not going to hold up transcripts over this. This is not your fault. We can't afford to pay it, but it's certainly not your fault either. I, you know, this is, this really needs sustained political pressure. And this is, this will be a good experience, actually. Look on it as an opportunity. Try to look, and try to look at everything as an opportunity. Sometimes it's more a challenge than... Yes?
There was another hand. So... Yeah, so, what if we haven't registered for classes, will we still be not even charged because we have the pay for it?
That will not hold you up for registration.
No, you'll be able to register for classes. If this is all that you owe, we are not going to hold you up for registration. So, don't worry about that. But that, again, that's why we need that individual conversation with you so we can go over it, see what kind of opportunities, challenges we have with your account. And everyone's is different. Every package is different. So, please come and see us, but we will not hold up your registration for it.
What about you for this thing here, for this grant, if we don't get the money and we can't pay it, would you keep us from graduating?
No, no, we would not keep you from graduating. It doesn't mean it goes away, it just means we have to trust you. We'll figure out a way to make it work.
For the students that want to go to the lobbies, will they get an excuse from their classes?
That was a good question. I meant to ask about.
Don't go just because you're going to miss class. We will contact faculty and let them know that you have signed up to attend the trip and it would be just like any other trip that you might take, that we would ask them to work with you to excuse that absence.
It is not serviceable. Any faculty questions as well? Faculty, staff?
Is there information for our parents about this?
The question was, is there information for our parents?
So, Dr. Nolan and my department will be drafting up emails that will be sent to you guys and we're hoping that you guys will pass that along to your parents as well. We do have some parents' email addresses, just not all. In addition to that, we're taking what's going on tonight. We are actually going to have a site on our homepage tomorrow that you can direct any family members, friends, parents to. It's going to give them the opportunity for them to easily print out a letter, find out where they need to send it, and any additional information that your parents might have. We've had a ton of phone calls from parents and if I was a parent, I would have a ton of questions as well. We encourage you guys to ask them to get on these sites, both our website and this website, to learn a little bit more as well. But we will have information that will be going out to parents. Additionally, if your parents are in the area and would like to attend the rally in the Rotunda, please invite them to attend. Same with faculty, staff, and students who are not MAP recipients, the more, the better. We want to have you there. The more pressure we can put on the legislature, the better.
I'd love to sign it, but just the way, I've never signed a blank check. I would, I mean, if you at least put on the petition, "Fund the MAP grant," I'd be much more comfortable signing it. And I think the legislators would think that it was not just some petition that you just get and hand in for anything whatsoever.
Does it have a header?
No, nothing.
Oh, it should have a header.
It has, it has a petition on the front of it.
But not good at square.
Correct, correct, let me finish. I did not bring the sheet that goes on top of it. Each representative, it won't just go to the House and Senate, but each representative got a letter that goes on top of it. It echoes almost exactly what the students' letters say. If you're not comfortable signing it today, come by the Office of Communications and that letter will be put in for you guys to sign.
The point is going to be a little quicker for the heading.
Absolutely.
Closer than that.
Yeah. And there's a letter that goes with it as well, but yes.
Yeah. Others? Why are we here?
Are there any other states in this situation, just out of curiosity?
Good question. Are there other states in this situation?
Not right now. I think we've passed their tests.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any. Do you know what the... You know, each, each state is different. Let's just go to this one. I don't think any state has been in such fiscal chaos as Illinois.
Pennsylvania? Pennsylvania? Okay.
I have a lot of coaching colleagues from Pennsylvania from where, from, I believe, there's a Fiat grant, which is very similar to the MAP. And they had issues with it a couple of years ago. I've reached out to those colleagues to see how they handled what their strategies were, so I'm waiting to get some feedback on that because they went through a very similar problem a couple of years ago in Pennsylvania.
Were they successful in keeping the funding?
I'm still waiting. I just, it was like, oh, I'll let you know. I did reach out to them just to see if they ended up in a crisis or did they resolve it and grant the students their money. So, I'm still trying to find it out.
So, lots of states are generally speaking, have been reducing their state funding. This is a, this is a general trend. There are some states that have increased, but the biggest issue about MAP that we're experiencing right now is the uncertainty. That hasn't happened in other states, really. The fact that you don't know, right at this point, we're so far into the ball already, whether it's coming through or whether it's not, or when, or what's going to happen, that uncertainty is the worst aspect of it. And that's where you're at.
Very good, thank you.
Question?
Okay, so, I'm sitting here now, but for my friends who aren't, say this is, this is just permanent and they're unable to pay, so like, what's going to happen? Like, are you guys going to lower tuition or something?
Here, here's, here's the deal, okay? Believe it or not, I mean, college is expensive, wherever you go, college is expensive because this is from a, from a sort of organizational point of view, college is expensive because it requires a lot of people to deliver the product. It's not like just, you know, buying something off the shelf from a supermarket. It's about people working with you. So, actually, the tuition, I know this might, you might find this familiar with the tuition, is really not, doesn't even cover the entire cost of the education. Because if you think about it, I'm talking about having highly trained, highly prepared professionals available pretty much all the time, 10 months of the year, as well as maintaining a very complex physical plant and providing institutional support. So, it's really not, if we were to arbitrarily reduce tuition, then it wouldn't, then that result would be incentive because it wouldn't have, we wouldn't have the means then to provide the level of scholarships that you do. So, what really has to happen, and that we could ask, the only other way to reduce tuition would be to ask Ameren to reduce our electric bill, to ask Blue Cross and Blue Shield to reduce our health care costs, and ask all employees to have cuts in their pay. That's not telling. And actually, our employees are not paid very well compared to a lot of other schools. But we do it because we love it and we believe in the mission of working with the students in the pan. So, we're really doing the best we can with very limited resources. So, these additional dollars from the state really are really critical. Now, what happens if they're not there? That is definitely a problem. And as Dr. Goach said, it's the uncertainty that's the biggest challenge. And that's, again, you... And that's, again, circling that to why it's important for these two strategies. The public strategy of demonstrating in a respectful way politically, and then the strategy of having an individualized appointment, because we're got individual attention to each student. And we'll try to work it through as best we can with the limited knowledge we have at this time.
So have you guys thought about making like a donation program or something? Because I know, I've seen, since I've been at Quincy, I've seen a lot of donation programs made, various programs on campus.
Right. That has been asked, now could we try to raise funds for this purpose? The reality is, it is so massive. The total amount is so great. The, it simply would not be feasible. It would certainly make us feel good that we're trying to do something. You know, someone suggested, well, maybe we could have a bake sale. You have to sell a lot of cupcakes to cover a million, three hundred thousand dollars, which is the total amount that the state owes you. That's the total amount the state owes our students collectively. And it just, it just really, it just regrettably is not the solution.
Do you want to follow up? Yeah, so we had a meeting with SGA, it was a program about, I think it was moving forward, or some campaign. How was that when you get funding?
Good question. The university has just launched a comprehensive capital campaign called Forever Forward. We've already raised about fifteen million dollars toward a twenty-five million dollar goal that will extend for another five years. And some people reasonably said, gee, if we're raising money for this campaign, why can't we raise money for this? Well, as Alan Steigerman in our business department says, and I love the analogy, because it's a good analogy. You have to imagine that there's different colors of money. There's green money, with which we can do things like award scholarships, pay salaries, pay the electric bill, pay the healthcare costs. And then there's red money, which is restricted money. It's for specific things that the donors want to have done. It's for buildings, labs, just science labs, improving classrooms, sort of hard kinds of projects. And the reality is that capital campaigns primarily are about those, that red money, the hard projects. Donors rarely give money for operating costs, like salaries, utilities, expendable scholarships. What donors do give money for for scholarships, we do get a lot of money for scholarships, but therefore, what's called endowed scholarships. An endowed scholarship is a chunk of money that's invested. And we're only allowed to use the interest or the dividends from that investment to help defer student scholarships. And we do do that quite a bit. And annually, that's about seven hundred thousand dollars or so in endowed scholarships that we give out. That's in addition to what we get from the state. And so the amount of the endowment that Quincy University has generates about seven hundred thousand dollars a year in dividends that we can distribute, which we do. And that, again, is in addition to what we get from the state in the end. So we are doing the best we can. Yes?
If they do deny all payments, would there be a way for us, the people of the state, to receive those funds eventually? If they do deny all payments, would there be a chance for us to appeal to the state to eventually receive those payments?
Good question. If they don't deliver the full payments, could you appeal that to the state? You can always appeal. I mean, you want to answer that? I mean, actually, the state owes us money for another project, and we're continuing to appeal it. Will we ever get it? I don't know. I would say, never give up, you know? Never give up, never give in. Someone said that to me.
Yes, there's a question.
So if the current deck's not the state's, okay, where is this on like the priority list?
Excellent question. That's why we have to go to Springfield. Because where it is on the priority list has to do with who makes the most noise. You've heard the expression, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. It's the squeaky wheels! That will determine where it is in the priorities.
So if what's in question is only what the state has promised us, not what QU personally has promised us?
Yes, very important point. The question is, is what is in question just what the state has promised us, not what QU has promised us? Absolutely. Your institutional aim remains what it is. Any endowed scholarships you have from Quincy University remains as they are. This is just about MAP funding.
Okay, no, I don't need the money.
Okay? I probably don't either.
So, okay, just to get the bigger picture here. If this, if we do not receive this money, we're gonna have to eventually pay this off. Correct?
Yes.
That's all I need to know.
But again, how that, you know, that can be done in a much more manageable way, depending upon your circumstances. And that's why individual meetings are so important.
If this doesn't hit one of them for the next school year, where do you see QU being able to have more students coming? I saw a year left, but I'm worried for the future. How would that affect if there's a number that's not?
Boy, I wish I had an easy answer to that. This goes back to Dr. Goos's comment about uncertainty. We are all uncertain. Everyone in the state of Illinois is uncertain. It is just uncertain. And I really wish I could give you a certain answer, but I can't. Can anyone else make that better?
Well, here's what it is. It's uncharted territory, really. Because this sort of thing has never happened before. And right now, although I am concerned, we're all concerned about how many students we're gonna be able to bring in here, how many students we're gonna be able to serve here, and all of those things. What's really, really important to us as members of the university of higher education is, if MAP is no longer there, that means a fundamental access to education, higher education, for Illinois students is compromised. So it's not just how many students we can bring into QU. It's access to higher education for Illinois students in general. If that's compromised, that, to me, is the biggest problem, right? And we're, all schools, all colleges in Illinois will share that pain. And that is the biggest problem.
The repercussions of this, if that results, this is some of the talking points you can mention when you go to Springfield, if you can go, is exactly that. This would have a cascading effect on if you go to competitiveness of the state in terms of attracting business residents, because it would be a very serious competitive disadvantage vis-à-vis others. So, but just know that as we get more information, we will immediately transmit it to you on multiple channels, including, of course, QU TV, our favorite TV station.
Okay, so if they don't lose the money, we'll have to pay back. But when we start paying back and they decide to release the funds, will we give you punch checks?
Absolutely, yes. Happy day, we will party! Yes. If you work out an arrangement, and then the MAP grants come through, immediately you can have that in general.
Are we the only school that's attending on November 10th? Or is it a variety of schools?
All open state. Everyone in the state is being encouraged to send these some students. Again, we analyze over this, because you are here to be in class. And I know that's where you'd rather be, correct? All right. But this is important.
For any of you guys that are from Chicago, they are, they're having a rally there as well. So encourage friends, parents, anybody that's there. But it's the same time as the Springfield rally. They're just trying to meet the two major cities.
Yes.
For the rally, like, would you like us to like make signs or like wear colors or something?
What we'll do is, once we know who's going, I'll send out some information about that. And yes, signs would be great, appropriate signs. And it would be business attire. And what we'll do is, once we count the list, our office will work with contacting state representatives to set up meetings for you while you're there. I've done this before, be prepared, it's a little bit chaotic, but it's a lot of fun. And it's really hard for state senators to tell you no when they hear your personal story. So please attend if you can.
So will we be speaking in web centers or for a time?
Yes, we are going to try to set up meetings with your representatives. And we're gonna ask you for your zip code a lot in this process. And that's because it allows us to connect you with your specific senator or representative.
Anything else? Any other questions? Other questions? Going once? Other questions? Going twice?
Will we talk to them if we have any further questions about this?
If you have further questions that you didn't think of, or that you'd prefer to discuss separately, you can talk either to me, or to Heidi Mott, or to Dr. Nolan, or to Tim Reese, or to Jean Green. Any of us?
Any of us.
Dr. Goos?
Well, we have to, because I heard suggestions about like extended payment plans. So what if that payment plan extends after we graduate? Because like, some of us are seniors, so student loans are smacking us six months after we walk that stage. So do these extend after?
Yeah, they probably would extend past May. That's why we said we're not gonna hold up transcripts. But again, that's why it's really important that you meet with us individually, so we can see what your payments could be, should be, things like that. So, and I also wanted to say, if you're from Quincy or the area, and you have an appointment, if your parents want to come with you, they are more than welcome. Or we can also do a conference call with your parents, too. So if your parents are interested and wanna hear what we have to say about your individual account, please let us know that, and we'll get ahold of them. Yes?
You said you're not gonna hold up transcripts, but what about diplomas?
We would give you a diploma.
Okay.
Thank you guys so much for coming. What I urge you guys to do is educate the uninformed. And I think the first thing that everybody wants to do is point fingers. And right now, the only people that we can point fingers at is the state of Illinois. We are doing the university as much as possible to help you guys. We will continue to do that. So we need you guys to stay positive. We are trying to stay positive. And please, no question is a dumb question at any point. I was a MAP grant recipient, and I would not have been able to go to college if I did not get MAP grant. So believe me, our hearts are with you guys. And please do not forget to sign a letter back there, and encourage your peers to do the same. Thank you, guys. Thank you so much for coming.